Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, June 7th, 2023. The Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from May 3rd, 2023. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of May 3rd, 2023, as written into the record.
Second? It's moved in second. In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. And we have a second set of minutes from May 17th, 2023. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of May 17th, 2023, as written in the record.
Second? It's moved in second. In all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Alrighty. So much for the housekeeping stuff. First up tonight's recommendations to Mayor and City Council for SDP 9462-2022, a new 1,012 square foot commercial outdoor dining pier at the Rio Washingtonian Lake parcel in the MXD mixed-use development zone. And this is a recommendation to the Mayor and City Council for an updated SDP. And presented from staff, it looks like Sam Copeland's pulled into the presentation chair. Good evening, Sam.
That is me. Good evening, everyone. Alrighty, so this is a recommendation, as you said, to the Mayor and City Council for schematic development plan application SDP-9462-2022. The subject property, shown on the monitor, is the 18.09 acre lake parcel off the Rio Washingtonian Center, an MXD zone site that is generally bounded by I-270 to the north, Boardwalk Place to the south, and Rio Boulevard to the west. The applicant, 14 Blue Ridge Restaurant Group, filed an SDP application on December 9th, 2022, requesting approval for a 1,012 square foot restaurant pier in the Washingtonian Rio Lake to be utilized by Copper Canyon as a covered outdoor dining area. A joint public hearing for this application was held on May 1st, 2023, and one member of the public provided testimony during the course of the public hearing. During the course of the hearing, the following aspects of the proposed plan were discussed: architecture, pier mechanics, and operation and safety of the dining pier. The applicant responded to all questions during the joint public hearing. The Planning Commission held its record open until 5:00 PM on May 31st, 2023. Staff did not receive any additional public comments regarding the subject application. The plan has remained unchanged, other than revision to the zoning tables to correct minor typos. The plan proposes a 1,012 square foot covered dining area located adjacent to the Copper Canyon Restaurant. There are two gangways that connect the structure to the boardwalk. As you can see here on the screen, these are the elevations. The pier section above the waterline and below the floor level will be cladded with cedar wood planks. Both the structural columns in the roof will be made of wood. The roof and fascia will match the existing Copper Canyon building. Wood vertical slats will be installed above the roof beam and below the roof on the west and east elevations. A three-foot, four-inch-tall steel railing system will be present on all four sides. And the proposed pier will not contain any screen or permanent walls. The application is in conformance with the sketch plan for the subject property, which is the fifth amendment to Annexation X-159. The SDP application meets applicable zoning requirements established during the sketch plan. There is sufficient parking with a 159 parking space surplus, the proposed structure is well below five stories, and the FAR is below the .75 requirement. Staff is supportive of the subject application SDP-9462-2022, finding it in accordance with the master plan, sketch plan, and zoning ordinance. The proposed dining area will enhance the integration of compatible and complementary uses within the shopping center. Further, the plan continues to support a vibrant mix of uses at the Rio Washingtonian Center. The proposed materials and design will integrate harmoniously with the existing development and will not adversely affect the surrounding community. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings in the final staff analysis, recommend approval of SDP-9462-2022 to the Mayor and City Council. Thank you. I'm available if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Sam? No? Our record is closed, so we're just doing our recommendation tonight. I, you know, assuming all of the code issues are covered, and this is kind of a unique little building, I don't know what, where it falls in the, in the type, building type, but...
Maritime dining facility.
I guess, you know, our houseboat.
I don't know where this sits in the IBC either.
But it's interesting that there's another dimension to how to activate the waterfront and create some interestingness there. I think it's just, it's great, it's wonderful. I mean, I, you know, I don't know if it's, in and of itself is a beautiful structure, but it's, you know, it's a great idea to do something that's a little different, unique for the, for the area. Takes advantage of the waterfront. So, any other concerns?
I was gonna say, it's the kind of thing that we suggest from the DS every once in a while, and we try not to intervene too much or too specifically, but we'll suggest things like this, and very rarely, you know, has any traction because it's something that's a little unique. And so, I think it's, just as the chair said, it's really welcome, unique addition to what's already a pretty unique development. So, I can't wait to grab a bike there.
Okay. Any other concerns, questions? If not, staff has recommended, we recommend approval to the Mayor and Council. Is there a motion, please?
Chairman, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings in the final staff analysis, the Planning Commission recommend approval of SDP 9462-2022 to the Mayor and the City Council.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks very much. If anybody's here from that project, good luck. Thank you for bringing this in.
Save us a seat.
Next up is, we have one site planned, on the site plan agenda tonight, for AFP 9482-2023, improvements to the Crown Neighborhood Park, 266 Crown Park Avenue in the MXD mixed-use development zone. This is amendment to final site plan. And presenting from staff is Greg Mann. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening. Staff is before you tonight to present the amendment to final site plan application AFP 94-9482-2023. This application comes before the Planning Commission according to Section 24172A, which requires the Planning Commission to grant amendments to approved final site plans. The applicant is requesting improvements to the existing neighborhood park in Crown Neighborhood 1. As shown on the screen, the property is located at 266 Crown Park Avenue. Access to the property is from Ellington Boulevard, Crown Park Avenue, and Alcott Place. I will note, while staff does support the amendment, we do have some concerns with the proposed 30-foot tall multi-head lights. It was noted in the staff analysis. It's our opinion the lights are not compatible with the surrounding Crown Neighborhood and the adjacent residential units. With that said, I'll turn it over, the presentation over to the applicant to present the project and answer any questions you may have.
Sounds good. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Nick Peach. I'm with Bowler Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant. Just wanted to take you through a few slides, just to show you what we're proposing. I want to thank Greg and Jasmine for all the hard work and helping us through this. And I will say upfront to Greg's last point about the lights, we are fully supportive, working with staff to make that, that work and fit something that, that'll support the surrounding areas. So, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Matt if you want to walk us through, and I can flip through the slides for you.
Sure, sounds good. Good mor-, good afternoon or good evening. Matt Randolph, Mahon Reickel Associates, just want to walk you through some of the main components of the plan. Really, one of our goals in starting the project was to improve accessibility to the park space. It was fairly difficult to go from Crown Park Avenue to the retail frontage and the parking garage, the Ted's Bulletin space and kind of the edges. So what we're really trying to do is open up the accessibility. We're adding walkways, seating areas, and other programmed elements to not only improve the accessibility, but also improve seating and places for people to come and gather. Our team is, are really big fans of providing different types of seating experiences for people to come to the park space, so it's not quite the same each time they come. It will encourage people to come back to the park, use it differently each time. So whether it's a resident, a tenant of one of the buildings, or a patron that's coming to one of the shops or the restaurants, really layering that experience is going to be very important to us, and that's what you'll see in these plans. Kind of working from left to right and kind of on the bottom, we're improving the streetscape along Crown Park Avenue, really taking what's been done by the applicant along Ellington Boulevard, and pulling that around and creating that kind of outdoor living room and seating along the streetscape, utilizing the existing trees and kind of creating those spaces for people to linger and mingle on the edges. On the edges of the lawn itself, we're bringing in some unique elements. On the right-hand side, there is a new stage feature, which you'll see in some of our renderings. That is really meant to have programmed activities and events for the community itself. It also creates some branding for the park, and also creates a visual icon for users that are off to the west. The park is fairly hidden behind Ted's Bulletin, so a lot of effort has been made to pronounce the park kind of out along the street and create that visual focal point as well, which you'll see. On the top side of the park space, we're improving the existing kind of trellis feature that's there. That will be a sister piece to the stage, again, kind of creating that continuity between the architectural elements. That really is intended to be this great space where people can come and linger and sit in the park. There's soft seating, other types of ways to use that space, a great kind of front porch for the retail that's there. And then on the edges on Ted's Bulletin, we do envision potential future improvements to Ted's that might be able to create some connection, but what we're trying to do there is to improve the existing trees that are there. We're losing a few, but we're adding some in other spots, but really creating, again, kind of a passive use area, very much kind of a European seating element where, you know, tables and chairs can kind of be moved around, around the tree. So, again, very kind of interesting edges. If we go to the next slide, this just starts to show you kind of the scale of the space. Again, Ted's Bulletin to the left, our stage feature to the right, and that kind of outdoor living room with the trellis structure on the top side of the page, what you'll see again are kind of the, the new walkways that are on each side of the lawn, and then really a multitude of seating elements that are going to be proposed, not only on the edges, but also in the lawn itself. Really envision the lawn to be this active space where seating can be moved around, very flexible for events and other activities, whether it's a group of five or 10 people there, or an event that has several hundred people there for a concert. Really, you know, that dual-purpose design is really what we're looking for. Go to the next one. Again, kind of looking over the park back towards the stage area, you can see, also, we're trying to kind of create that backdrop for the park. The townhouse units are there, so really putting the stage there and pushing the sound and the activity back towards Ted Bulletin was very purposeful, also in kind of creating that focal point, which you can kind of see there at the corner. Again, kind of that sister piece, shade structure there at the center, and then kind of the soft seating, kind of the element there on the bottom left where Ted's Bulletin is as well. Then, kind of looking back through, you'll, here you'll start to see a hint of those, those mast lights. We've used those very successfully on projects. We know that they're, you know, they're tall, but some of the advantage of those is that we have less lights. We can aim the lights, we can, we can light the center. So it was very purposeful to kind of reduce the amount of light poles that were there, but kind of anchor the space and be able to give that kind of program, programmability for events kind of in the lawn space itself. But here, again, you can start to see kind of the retail promenade that exists and how we're going to be trying to really pull users from Crown Park Avenue up into the space and really activate that retail frontage as well. Do the next one. Again, kind of looking back over the stage, you can start to see the quieter edge of the park as we transition back towards the townhomes, existing and kind of proposed plantings here as we work our way, you know, kind of in the foreground. And then looking back again, you can see all of the activities of Crown Park beyond what we're really trying to connect back to. And then here are just a series of ground sites, just for reference. The top left is the view down Crown Park Avenue. That's Ted's Bulletin on the left there. Again, you can see the stage feature, kind of creating that beacon to, you know, announce the park and pull users through. The image on the top right, again, is kind of that, that arrival point. You can see some of the unique kind of tiered out stage or seating elements that we're proposing in the lawn to really, again, create those fun places for people to sit and gather. And then kind of on the bottom right there is the view as we arrive kind of from the townhomes. Again, we have a, kind of a unique stage element with branding on the backside. But all of these improvements kind of have come together to create a much more activated Crown Park that we're really excited about implementing in the future.
Great.
So with that, we're here. We can answer any questions you may have, but that kind of wraps up the presentation.
Well, let's spend a little time, since, since staff brought up at the beginning, on the lighting, and maybe you want to do a little bit more background, design intent, whatever it is. What are you after there? What's the...
So, the, the park space is large, the lawn, we want it to be lit, so it's very difficult to throw light out into the center of a lawn space. So we're trying to avoid dark spots in the park itself. So, the mast lights allow us to aim light out strategically into the center of the lawn. It also is going to reduce the number of lights that we'd need on the perimeter. So, we're trying not to overlight it. So while the mast lights are taller, it's allowing us to be much more efficient with the lighting. As the trees grow, the building, the retail and mixed-use building beyond is also at very significant heights. So, we do think that they're appropriately scaled for the space, but it's allowing us to really kind of light the center of that park space, so it can be more usable at all times of the day.
But like, to what level? I mean, you're not, you're not trying to light a baseball field here, right? I mean, you're, you're doing more of a, of an urban park kind of low-level lighting, right? Or are you trying to get it something that's bright for...
No, it's gonna be just to whatever the, the minimums will be. Like, there's, there's the ability to program that if they have an event, they can, can brighten that, or if there's a concert or something like that. But the intent is to have kind of that, that minimum level lighting. But we really want to have the light at the center of the lawn space. So it doesn't, we don't end up with a dark space right in the middle where, you know, it's gonna kind of be counterintuitive to what we're trying to do. We really want users to come out to the lawn and really activate that. So that dark spot could be problematic.
I mean, when you're there in the evening now, it's light enough to see what's going on. I mean, just from all the ambient light, from the street, from businesses, from all the stuff that's going on around there, it's not as if you walk across a dark lawn and you'll trip over somebody. You can see things. Now, you probably can't play frisbee, but, you know, it's, it's not unsafe. So I'm kind of trying to get at what, what light levels are you really aiming for and what kind of activity do you expect that to support?
Yeah, I think that they're, they're really looking to have kind of multipurpose events. The space is meant to be flexible. It's, it's large enough to have winter activities and other, you know, fall festivals, concerts, things like that. So, really just that flexibility of, of having that light and to be able to control is really what the applicant's doing.
Are, are you envisioning something like, I, I just, off the top of my head, putting a skating rink there in the wintertime?
It's, it's large enough that it could, if you wanted to, so...
Except just, I, my thoughts are along the same line of yours, like, what activities would you be having there that you'd need to light it? Like, you don't need that light for people to sit on a blanket in a concert. The stage is gonna be lit.
It could be, I mean, there's a series of winter stuff that could be, you know, and I'm speaking for the applicant, but there could be the Christmas craft thing, you know, and, and it gets dark by five.
Yeah.
So there could be the Halloween, you know, chase the pumpkin around and Bob Trapples or whatever the cliche is. And, and there's a series of stuff that happens in winter that kind of, you know, needs to be better lit than a concert or movie or the things that don't require high light. There are, there are a bunch of ways to do it, though. And, and if you had the high poles and staff were able to get comfortable, it would have to be, you know, hard, hard cutoff fixtures, and somehow we'd have to sort of lock it in so that there just isn't the dumb event that happens regularly where there's just a big spotlight and it's shining right at the townhome across the street. It just, it happens all the time. When you put up a pole like this, it's an attractive nuisance for whoever's adjusting them.
Well, we'll get into the discussion, but it's also from one, it's unidirectional, too. It's not, it's, it's gonna throw some weird shadows just coming from one corner. So, any other...
I just wanted to hear what you want to say there, because staff adds some ideas, I believe.
Well, I just want to make sure we understood what the purpose was, and then we can, we need to get testimony and a lot of this about there, too.
Along with that, is, is there any permanent lighting fixtures that are going to be placed on the stage area?
There are some lights up in the, in the shade structure itself, so that, that will have its own lighting.
And will, and obviously it'll be, it'll be wired in for speakers and things like that for future uses?
That, or it's, well, yeah, you'll plug in an amp or, you know, speaker things like
So at some point, you could have lighting coming from the stage out onto the, out onto the lawn, if you will, and that may be more sufficient than putting up a pole of 30 feet or so. Just an alternative, light coming from the stage rather than going the other way.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions on the presentation? No, you can ask.
Okay, well, I did have, I mean, it's a nice promenade, but I'm looking at the parking, and I'm just wondering, as you exit the cars, unless you got Grandma coming out with, with little Billy, are you stepping in grass? What, what is that?
There's a, there's a splash band of pavers and then...
Okay, okay, they're pavers. That's what, okay.
Yeah, then there's a carpet in between each of the trees.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Alright, so, we need to hear from the public if anybody's interested in commenting on this. And what I'll do is, tech team, there's a lot of folks on as attendees tonight, relatively speaking. Would you please go ahead and play the instructions for comment?
They didn't have a queued up aircon. Maybe?
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom, and you're on a desktop or a laptop, and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay.
I don't know if, we couldn't hear the sound very well in the chambers. I don't know if you heard it online, but there's a little hand raise button at the bottom. So please push that or click that if you want to, want to testify and you're online tonight. In the meantime, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? And nobody's looking up from their iPhone, so, no. Let's do this. Give me, give the folks just a minute who are online, but in the meantime, Greg, why don't you go ahead and read the recommendation?
No problem. So staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report findings, recommendation, grant AFP-9482-2023, finding a conformance of Section 24170 and 24172A of the city code with the two conditions outlined in the staff analysis.
Very good, thank you. Alright. Commissioner's comments. I'll keep an eye on the hands raised if anybody does, does want to jump in, but in the meantime...
I guess let's ask the question that, I guess, Lord, somebody was about to ask, which is, does the applicant have thoughts about how to solve the lighting concern?
The, the lighting desire, the, their recommendation for the taller light was to reduce glare, you know, kind of in, in the park space itself.
Right.
I, I think that they're, if the 30 feet is too tall, I think we'll just need to study, you know, per the staff report, you know, a different lighting strategy and bring that back for the, the final site plan. So, but really that was their intent, was the, the glare and kind of the functionality of, of the park space as well.
And the park is controlled by who?
That's a good question.
It's the Crown Neighborhood 1 Association.
Okay. So the, the investment's being done by the developer at this point, and then it gets turned over to...
It's, it's being handled by the Kite Realty, which is the retail entity, I believe, for Crown Neighborhood 1.
Okay.
But the park is owned by the association. The association did sign off on these plans.
They did, okay.
Okay. Then over time, whether it's lighting or maintenance or whatever, that's the association that would take care of that?
You wanna?
Yeah.
Doug Kirby with Kite Realty Group, representing, we are, we are the retail entity that controls the retail. We have, we have the right to use it under a license agreement with the neighborhood association. We're responsible for the maintenance and ongoing expenses associated with this.
Great, great. Okay, thanks for that.
And I, I will add, you know, the 30-foot poles are meant to minimize the number of poles. If we do bring them down, we'll probably have to add a, a few poles. So I, I think we can come to a resolution here with staff, but that was, that was the thought basis behind the higher poles, is just to minimize the number of poles and that noise pollution.
Fair enough. Yeah, okay. Thanks. So anybody want to start? Comment? I, I mean, I think, so we can, we can comment that a 30-foot pole is too high. It may not be. It actually may be right for whatever you're trying to solve for. But what I haven't really heard is a solid, what are you solving for type of thing. Because there's a couple of suspicious things about it where it could be right at 30 feet, but it's all from one corner of the site. So that means you're gonna get this, oh, there's two. I didn't, I'm sorry. I missed that.
There's one, there's one right here, too. There's one over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that on the plan. Okay, so that's a little better. But we've all experienced those kinds of light schemes where there's a place you'll be standing on the site, and you look up, for whatever reason, you're gonna get some pretty serious foot candles in your eyes when you, when you look up and see those, those luminescence. So, I, but, but, you know, again, my experience in this park and a lot that are similar, the urban kind of new urban parks, is it doesn't take a lot of light to activate them at night because there's so much else going around. So, if this has a unique functional programming element, whatever it is, that needs 20-foot candles across the center that, for some period of time, then, you know, obviously we can support, solve, what's that?
Suntanning?
Solve it for that. You know, I mean, if it's an outdoor room and things you're gonna have, that's great. That's, that could be a really interesting, interesting thing. But I think we'd want to know a little better and a little bit more specifically what, what that's, what that is, before there's just sort of an arbitrary series of floodlights in there. Mainly because unless there is a really specific program, I'm nervous that is, I think Commissioner Hopkins or Wessel said that you end up with a head facing just into somebody's apartment or somewhere else, and it never gets fixed because it's not used that much anyway, you know, until some event comes along. So, anyway, that, that would be my one, one concern. Otherwise, I gotta say, I'm really impressed with the response to what effectively is kind of three, four years in of use and probably what, you know, worked and didn't work, because things like that happen over, over time, once you see a neighborhood mature and people begin to use it. And, and clearly, it's responding to the, the opportunities and needs, yeah, that happened by, by having it open, because it could've gone the other way, right? It could just kind of die and just be this open space that's not used. I'm really impressed with this. And I think, I think the lighting is a small issue right now. It just, it just needs a little bit more specificity and, and more care, I think. And I think you'll be there. Any, any other...
I'll just, I'll, I'll add to that, you know, list of concerns that I agree with you, that a lower pole is concerned because then it's in, in your eye, you know, that, that illumination is in your eye. So, you know, there, there's, it's a tough, it's a tough nut to crack or whatever. But, but it needs very careful thought. And if you end up with something, whether it's, you know, 12 feet or whether it's 30 feet, we really got to watch where those heads can turn. So we got to make sure that, you know, that my idiot cousin isn't putting, you know, pointing those lights and, and it's going right into the apartment. But, you know, it's not his fault.
The one from Boston?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. New Orleans, but same thing. But, and I would say, I would swi-, the three to four years, it's, you know, here, here we are, you're coming into a proven, an already approved site plan. It's like, you, I don't know, we have, give you a crown or necklace or some kind of prize or something, because it's great, right? So we're all excited about it. But, you know, but I, I would even say, yeah.
Crown, crown.
I would even say, you know, 25 years ago, you know, I was sketching on this site, and there was things that we kind of left on the table way back then. And then I slowly moved over to the Planning Commission, and, you know, we've been working on all these things. And, and to finally see some of these things that we wanted at this intersection coming to fruition is, is kind of exciting. Some of the things that the budget pushed off, frankly. And now, it's probably even a better product than if we just put down what we had originally sketched out then, because now it has, as John says, the, you know, the proof of use. And, and it's, and even though it was only a one sentence from the community that says, "We approve" or whatever, it's a funny letter. Did you guys see that? But it's, I think it's great.
I want to say that. I am really pleased to see something like this. You're not just building and going.
Yeah.
I love the fact that you're trying to, to program a utilized, a space that can be utilized by the community. And I just think it's just very respectful of, you know, the neighborhood and the residents and the city. I'm really happy to see this.
It, it rises the value of that retail there, too, which is good. We like that, too.
Excellent. What do you think tonight?
Sorry, no, what we go through.
Okay. I just could say that in addition to the aiming and the glare, the, the controls and the timing of those light fixtures are critical, right? Like, even, even if, if you were to build exactly what's on here, the most important thing is like, that they're not on a timer, and they're not coming on every night, and that there's special event lighting and not a, you know, somebody doesn't decide, hey, we, we like the park really bright, so we're just gonna turn these on every night at 5:00. Like, that's a, that's a whole different case than we're having an event for two evenings and we want to light up the park. So I just add that into the...
I understand that's really hard for us staff, really. Staff, really, to sort of, you know, figure that out and put that down in a site plan approval is really hard.
Makes it, makes us more inclined to review things from, okay, we should just assume these are on all the time because that's the likely scenario, so...
Well, I'm sorry, did Jasmine, I mean, did you have a discussion with Jasmine about the concerns or, or anything about the, the lighting? Because you said that the staff had concerns about the lighting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, as in the report, we do have concerns with the height of light and then the light, the light levels, especially with that close to residential. I agree, there's a number, there's a lot of ambient lighting in the area, in my experience, and it's that it's not typically a very dark space in general. But we understand what the applicant's looking to do as well. We just think it could probably be done in more, maybe a lower light, or if there's a couple more lights out there, it's maybe a little closer pedestrian scale since that's what they're aiming to gain anyway. So we're happy to work with them on it.
I think, I think I propose, and you can help word this if you would, Greg, something to the effect that applicant to work with staff, this would be just a condition, or a condition with the approval, to more, more specifically define the activity and the appropriate light levels that go with it, and then design a solution that does that, as opposed to a kind of a generic, assume you're gonna floodlight it with whatever. And that would include some photometrics and some things that really quantify what's going on, you know, controls, things like that, so... going on, you know, controls, things like that, so...
So, you want to add to the first condition?
Well, okay, fair enough. So you say must revise or eliminate. Yeah, but I think, I think this is direction to, to staff then, is that it, it's, it's scenario-based or it's specific use-based?
We can definitely work with them to try to figure out exactly what, what the goal or the, the intent of those lights are.
Yeah. And if you think, if you think the discussion covers all that and the, and the conditions find the way it is, that's okay, too?
I would think it does.
Okay. Good. Applicant, good with that?
Absolutely.
And, you know, if there's a loggerhead, it comes back to us, right? So...
And then Matt gets to design your lighting.
And it'll be expensive.
I hear the, I hear the, I hear the Germans make really good floodlights.
Beautiful stuff, yeah, beautiful stuff.